Point, we don't have our first member here, the first people, first group brother here. We'll accommodate that. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to do something a little off script tonight because I think unless you're watching this frequently, you wouldn't know, but my fellow board members and wonderful board administrators certainly know that I've had some absence from this board for a while, and I want to thank each of the board members for jumping in and taking over and filling my, my seat. I see Mr. Igo's with us down in Florida. That's good. Hello, Mr. Igo. And I also want to particularly thank you, Dolores Fallon, for just being a wonderful board administrator and being so helpful to me in my absence. So hats off to you. So as I say, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of this, the Yarmouth Board of Appeals, this February eight, nine, rather, 2023. My name's Steve DeYoung, and I chair this board. It's certainly my proud privilege to do so. So we're going to convene this meeting this evening, but as required by chapters 30A, sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 adopted measures during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notices provide necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by using the raise hand function, and we will notice you and allow your input. If a committee member is remote, such as Mr. Igo is this evening, hopefully sunning earlier today down in Naples and feeling good about it, he's with us via Zoom. And the rest of our board, as you can see, is comprised of, to my right, Mr. Frapery, to my left, Mr. Mantoni, and to my far-left, Mr. Campbell. So with that, we're going to now start with the first matter on the agenda, which I believe no one's present for, but we'll.
Mr. Chair, there appears to be a Two Buttercup on the Zoom. I'm going to assume that that's the presenter.
Okay. Well, let me announce anyway. Is anybody here for petition 4984? That is Alexandra Nemnoff, trustee of the Two Buttercup Realty Trust, property located at Two Buttercup Lane in South Yarmouth, zoning district R40. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph 2. Hello.
Hello. My name is Alex.
Yeah, okay. Can you, can you, can you wait, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll call for you. Just wait for a second.
Okay.
The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph 2, and/or variance from 203.5 for front and side setback relief to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Mr. Fedorov is the architect, Mr. Tavaz is the landscape architect, and who is with us on the, on the Zoom? Who's just speaking?
Oh, I'm, I'm ordinary. My name is Alexander Nemnoff, Two Buttercup Lane.
This is Mr. Fedorov, is that what I heard? Okay. So, Mr. Fedorov, are you appearing on behalf of the petitioner tonight?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. Nemnoff. I'm sorry.
Yes. No worries.
All right. So, Mr. Nemnoff, I wasn't here on September 22nd, when this matter was originally scheduled, and so I'm going to step back, but we're going to, I'm just going to run this portion of the meeting, but I won't be voting on it unless you would like me to.
Well, everything fine with me.
Well, you'd have to start from the beginning if you wanted me to do it, because they didn't look at the September 22nd.
Yes, we could, we could, we could start.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and tell us about your petition?
Excuse me? Could you repeat, please?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I, I just hear you, and I maybe have a good connection, bad connection. Could you repeat, please, your questions?
Why don't you go ahead and start telling us about what you're seeking relief for tonight?
Oh, okay. So we, me and my wife, we own, we bought this property around two years ago, and we tried to build it for our family, to us and our four kids. The existing house was conditional, and we tried to build a new one. We had have approval from Conservation Department. We have approval, approval from Board of Health. And when we met with you in September, you suggested go to the historical because it's, it's a historical district, and I had with them a couple of meetings. And in the last meeting, they accept a new plan with historical view. We had a couple of meetings with them, and I provided them wherever they, they asked me about some, like a door mirror, a gable, and some entrance light. And, and, and right now, I'm your board, and try to, try to have some feedback from my project, or actually, I, I, I would like to have accept, but I would like to hear you. This is, it's lot, it's a point twenty, twenty-eight acres, around 12,000 square feet. It's non-conforming with new rules for setback. But we, I would like to ask you to, to consider, like, old setback rules when I could have, when the, like, existing building was built in 1945. It was, if I not mistake, 10 feet for each side and 15 by, by front line. We had also, like, a proof on new septic system, and we put it, like, on the front. And that's why it's like one, one, like, one place where we can, like, put a new one. It was like a more on the left side corner, like a front corner on the left side. It's maybe one, one corner when we, like, not, not on a new setback. That's why I'm here.
All right. Thank you very much. Members of our board are undoubtedly interested in asking us some questions, so we'll start with Mr. Igo, who joins us from Florida again. Good evening, Mr. Igo. Do you have any questions for our petitioner?
Well, I, I, actually, I have the plot plan in front of me stamped by Richard Hood. It shows that this property fronts on Buttercup Lane, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yeah, yes, correct.
Okay. And your existing dwelling is 14.3 feet off of the front setback. Is that correct?
Give me a second, please. I would like also to open plan from Mr. Hood. Could you repeat, please, like, as a front setback from existing 14.3 feet? It was your question?
Yeah, it shows here on his plan that it's 14.3 feet off your setback.
Yes.
And your new home, your proposed house, that I'm looking at on a plan dated 2/22/22, does not show the setback of the house from the street. It looks like it's further back. It says proposed house, 1355 square feet, so it appears that you're pushing it back. But I'm not seeing, I could guess, but I would say it's probably about 17 now back. Am I correct?
Well, what, what I opened right now, it's like a, a plan from wet stage land design.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah. And I see the numbers right now. It's 15.1 feet from, from the street to a new house.
All right. That 15.1 on my plan goes to what is a line that's called a building envelope?
Yes.
Well, you have in dark, or in, like, a royal blue right behind that, what appears to be, it says your proposed house that's set back even further than that. Is that what you're seeing also?
So, well, yeah, yeah. Sorry, English is my second language. I will try to do my best to, to explain for, for you, and we'll try to ask you for all questions. So, like, like a blue, blue line, yes, like, a plan with blue line, yes. It's some proposed for new, new foundation, new footprint.
New foundation, okay.
Yeah, new, yeah, new footprint.
Well, that looks like it's set back further than the 15.1 building envelope line. So for purposes of discussion, we'll just say that it's further back than 15 feet, and your proposed house will be further back than the 14.3 of your existing house. Now, you're required, I'm looking at the, your line for the coastal bank in the rear of the property, that black broken line, I presume that's from the Conservation Commission, and they will not let you go any further back.
Yes, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. I, I can go closer to the water bank because they have a restriction, 35 feet.
Okay. So it appears, just so we're all on the same page, that your house is actually, your new house will be set back further than the existing house, which doesn't meet the current requirements of the setback, which is 30. However, it's certainly an improvement from the 14.3.
Hey, can I, can I interject just for a minute there, Sean?
Sure.
Because you're raising a good point, but I don't want to confuse what that solid black line is. That appears to say, and I could be wrong, I don't think it's a lot line at all. I think what it is, is it's exactly what it says, 100 feet from Coastal Bank. That's just that denotion there, because of the need to address conservation issues within the 100 feet within the coastal bank. It looks to me like it's 15.1 to that line, and then, and the broken line there, and the so-called inner riparian rights, and then it's about another seven, 16 feet, well, no, about 15 more feet to the road pavement. Now, I don't, I don't know.
You see the pavement line? Do you have a road pavement line, an actual, I see the Buttercup. Is there, is there a, okay. So, all right, so what do we figure that it's close to 30?
I'm seeing it as a little over 30, yeah.
Okay. I don't have an exact measurement, anyway. You're right, by the way. That's that 100-foot line from Coastal Bank, and that's 100-foot inner riparian zone. I apologize. It's a little confusing.
I think the plan's very confusing, so you picked up on something good. Thank you.
Okay. So your setback, you can't go back any further. You may not have to be. And the plan that you submitted to us, that we also have here, this is the house that you're going to put on that lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How many bedrooms is it?
Three bedroom was approved from, from Health, Board of Health.
Okay. So you have a septic system that can handle a three-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay. And it doesn't look like you need any side setback relief, if I'm trying to read this. I'll let others take a look at it.
So, yeah, because, like, we need to put a new, new septic system, and actually, I, it's, it's, it's a heart, and we have, like, a no-building zone. It's hard to move, like.
I, I see that. I don't, what, what we don't have in front of us is a site plan that shows the septic design. Do you have one of those?
Yeah, well, we was submitted, I have it, like, right now in front of me. It's SDS Buttercup file.
Wait a minute, hold on. Maybe I have it right in front of me. I apologize.
No worries.
The large color printout has it on, Sean, if you have that.
Well, the one that. I, I see this, and I'm looking at the large color one, but I'm not quite, is anybody seeing the actual lot lines of this property?
Nope. No, I think it's supposition that it goes to Buttercup. I'm not seeing it.
I don't see a sideline setback. I don't see a rear setback. I don't see any boundary lines. I see lines relative to conservation. I don't see anything out to Buttercup. I think those are the lines that we are interested in. The lines that, the plans that you showed us are really plans that have more to do with the Conservation Commission, I think, than us.
So, well, all this, like, septic plan and all growing was done after the conservation. Because the main question with conservation was, is it possible to build what, like, what, what I want, what I expect, first of all, yes. But because they, they, they had, they changed their, like, mind about the restriction, because before, a couple of years ago, they thought this is a pond, but right now, they thought this is a salt river. That's why all a rule was changed. And I didn't know about that. That's why I had a couple of meetings with Conservation. And after we was, both, we both of us was agree about the non-building zone, I relocate a proposed, new proposed on the back. And just after that, I start to do a septic plan and some other document. I, unfortunately, I couldn't see what, what kind of file I'm looking for right now. Maybe, is it possible to share with me your screen, and maybe I could, like, navigate, or maybe see and make some input on it?
I'm sorry, Sean. Did you have more questions?
Well, I actually, I, I would like to have a little discussion with the board here, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just so we're all on the same page.
Sure.
Because I don't see the property boundaries. I don't see the setbacks from the street, the sidelines. I see some lines, but I'm, I mean, I don't know. I, this does not appear to be a site plan to me.
Yeah. Well, Jay, Jay just pointed out that he has a plan, and it's one of many that are, there are so many differing plans in this file. It's, it's kind of tragic that we don't have a site plan. But on a, on a plan entitled, the site plan prepared by, prepared by petitioner.
Yep. I have that one.
Are you a surveyor, sir? Oh, prepared for. Who's that? Who's stamped? Richard Hood. Oh, he's a pretty good guy. But he doesn't tell us your property, property line, and I'm reading your running, I'm reading your deed, the deed into your family, and unfortunately, it's not a running description where we can read the feet from points, like cement bounds or landmarks. So we can't really tell where the line is. In my earlier comments, and I apologize to you, Sean, because I'm going on the, on the belief that he owned right up to the paved surface. Buttercup Lane, as you know, is a pretty small road.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think there's any bigger layout than what we're looking at there, but, you know. I don't know who, it looks like, if we look at the plan that I was just referencing, this so-called site plan by Mr. Hood, you can't, you can't tell where it is. And if it's where it seems to be, then he is only 14 feet, he'll be only 15.1 feet back. And even that.
Well, he'll be up to, it'll go from 14.3 to 19, to 19.5 on the front.
Okay, with the new location.
On the front. And then on the side, it goes from 19.1 down to 10 and a quarter. That's if, that's if this map relates to these green lines.
What are we seeing in the new one here?
This, this is right here, and here, and that relates to this plan, the 14.3.
Yeah.
Takes it right to this green line.
Yeah.
And then 19.5 takes it to the new front.
But this is showing existing structure, and it is no showing us where the proposed structure is.
Right here, I was looking at the big one. This is supposedly the same layout.
No, but that's not, that's not, that's a planting.
I understand. You know, I'm just trying to relate one to the other. That's what I was trying to do.
I know, but I also don't see any, any elevations.
I don't either.
I see 23 foot to a flat surface on one set of plans, and then we see the, the roof, the pitched roof, and it's not telling me the elevation. So, I mean, on what I'm looking at tonight, I'm having trouble considering it. Because we get to the attic, and I think that's at 23 feet, so we're looking at some structure above it, and that's only by calling different plans.
The last time the, the petitioner was before us, Mr. Chairman, I was chairing that meeting, and these were some of the same issues that we had last time. What we have here is we have this light blue line that proposed, that appears to be a foundation, is not cited on the property, and there's no, it requires that it be, and I'm not sure what Mr. Hood actually stamped. That's, that's another question. His stamp is on here, but, and I know it says site plan on one of them, it doesn't say it on another one. It's wetland permitting. That's the plan that he stamped, the one with some color.
Well, another issue, if you're looking at that plan, is how does he access this lot, if he's not abutting a street? If, if this, if this site plan by Mr. Hood is accurately showing the dimensions of the lot, but we don't have a running description, so we're assuming it. If that's the case, then how does he access the property? Because there's either got to be an easement or something, this owner unknown land here, apparently, that's going to tell us that he has a right to even get on this property from Buttercup Lane. I mean, it's just.
Yeah. I, I, I think, I think what we need is some more information on this. That would be my suggestion. I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other. My feeling on it, I mean, it, it looks like there's an existing house on the property, and it looks like he wants to put it back further than what the existing house is relative to the front of the property line, which certainly would be a, a decrease in the nonconformity, which would be a good thing, I think, from our perspective. But I think we need these, I think somebody needs to go back to Mr. Hood and say, we need to have a site plan showing the actual foundation, as well as the elevations of the house, too, to make sure it's compliant with the 35 feet.
And, and within the same plan, showing us the proposed location.
Yes. Yeah. It's, I mean, you put it this way. You couldn't get a building permit with these plans. And, and really, when they come before us, that site plan should be suitable to present to the building department for a building permit, and you could not get that with these.
So, could I ask you, please, what, what about, how about plan you for a septic system would show, like, same existing, the new foundation, and like a platform before the septic plant? Did you have it? Do you have it?
I, I, I see this color plan that proposes to show a septic system on the lot, but it does not have the distances to the foundation, which would be required for the Board of Health. I don't, maybe you're missing a plan here somewhere.
So, it's from C, C, CSN Engineering. I don't know. Maybe we, we talk about the different, different lands, because.
Might I suggest that you go speak with the building commissioner and talk to him about the site plan and where the actual location of the foundation's going to be, and where the, and talk, and also that would involve the Board of Health, because they would have to approve where the septic location is. That's what you need to do. Because, again, you're not going to get a building permit with what we have in front of us tonight, and we need to know exactly where the foundation is, I think, at a minimum. And then I think we need to know the elevations of this house, which.
Calculated by the town's calculation, not from the ground sloping.
Yeah, that would have to, exactly. And we don't know what, we can see how this, so that, that would be my suggestion, that I, I think you need to go back and get that done. And I would go back to Mr. Hood, too. I don't, I'm not quite sure what Mr. Hood's role is in this, because this site plan prepared for you is not suitable for either a septic permit nor a building permit. And that's what we need. I mean, I see on this where he stamped it, where you look at septic, it has a question mark. This one that I have on the, what's called site plan. So you need those, you need the elevations. It needs to show the top of the foundation. Then from there, we can look at your plan and look at the height of your building relative to what the top of the foundation is, and what the, what the elevation would be at the street. It, well, he's got top of, well, the current top of foundation is 18.3. I, I don't think you're going to have a problem with the height, personally. I just, we need to know where the foundation is.
Excuse me?
The lot lines.
Yeah. Excuse me, sir, for interrupt you. I have in front of me, like, a plan, what was submit to Health Department, and I see the whole elevations of, on this land. I see a full foundation plan and all these sizes. That's why I ask you, maybe, do you have it right now in front of you or not?
Yeah.
Mr. Wayne must send it to you. Unfortunately, he could not come today to our meeting. That's why I'm alone right now. But is it possible to share with you my, my screen, like, just to show you and ask, do you have this document or not? Because I.
I can't see your, I can't see your screen. Perhaps the chair can. I don't, I can't speak for the chair.
Well, here's, here's what I'm going to say real quick, just because if I'm asked to vote on this tonight, my vote would be no, to deny. And that's because I'm looking at no cohesive, comprehensive plan that shows me the present location of the structure with an overlay of the proposed location of the new structure with a distance back from the lot line. And if the lot line is as Mr. Frapery suggests by the existing site plan in the file, then how is access to this property grant, obtained? Because there's nothing. There's no reference to easements. There's no reference to, no running description, as I say. And I don't know how he gets onto this property. If that's some other third-party owner, he gets on, apparently, by trespassing. I, I just can't tell. So, I mean, I think all those things need to be, together with the elevation of the house as defined and determined by our bylaws, not by running a tape measure from the ground to, or on a CAD system. I want to know exactly what the elevation. I want to know exactly what the elevation is going to be when finished. So, you know, you all can keep talking on, but I thought I'd get my position out there pretty quick.
Well, Mr. Chairman, before we, I think there are some unanswered questions. I won't speak for the remainder of the board members, but I have those same concerns. I would not be prepared to vote in the affirmative on this tonight. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote for it if I had everything in front of me, as I'm sure you feel the same way. I think the best course of action would be for the petitioner to continue this, sign an additional extension, and get with his engineer, and have his engineer consult with the building commissioner's office to get all of these documents that we need, so this petition can be presented properly, because the file, as we have it in front of us, is incomplete, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah. I agree. There's just one other item on here, Sean, that I think they also should just check on it. The zoning information on what's called the site plan says it's R25 with the appropriate setbacks, and I believe this is an R40 lot, so they probably want to correct that also or.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, that's something that should definitely be brought to the attention of the engineer, because he's the one who has to, I mean, if he's putting his stamp on the plan, that information needs to be correct, because that's being certified by him. So, Mr. Chairman, if I might make that suggestion that we ask him to sign an extension and perhaps put him on a future hearing?
Yeah, I think that this shouldn't be interpreted by our petitioner as any disregard for your desire to move forward as quickly as possible, or disappointment or disdain towards what you're proposing to do. Rather, it's that we have to have a complete file before we can actually vote on something. That's our mandate, to have a file that we can rely upon, the specifics of it being contained therein. To tell me it's going to be under 35 feet in height, that's great to tell me, but it doesn't matter until I see it on piece of paper represented by you. To tell me that you have a guaranteed access to Buttercup Lane, doesn't do me any good unless I know how. So, I think you need to have those things worked out. So we can either do one of two things. We can either vote on it this evening. You've heard three, at least three members, I think four, say, no, there's not enough information here. So if that's the case, if we're called by you, and you can tell us you want us to vote on it, I think you're going to lose the vote, quite candidly. If you want to step it back, we're happy to agree to a continuance if that's your request, but you have to sign another extension agreement in order to accomplish that. So what do you think it would take your engineer to do this? Maybe another 30 days, 60 days?
I need to ask them. I think they will not take a lot of time to finalize all paperwork, to correct everything. And I will ready to come back to you soon.
Well, all you, all you guy has to do is watch the meeting on TV, and he can find out what our concerns are. You know, we're not going to write a memo of concerns or do anything like that, but what do you want us to do tonight? Because we have other people that are waiting and like to move it along. Would you want us to vote on it tonight? Or do you want to ask for a continuance to correct our concerns?
I would like to ask you to correct it and go continuing again.
Okay. So when would, do you think 60 days would be enough time, or do you want a shorter time?
Well, I would like to have shortest time.
Shorter time. Can we do anything for him at the end of March?
There's one slot in March 23rd.
How about March 23rd? Are you available?
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody have any concerns about that? Doug, I know you might not be that night, but if you're here, great. And if you're not, somebody that sits in your stead can just watch the video. Okay? So everybody else okay? You're okay, John? Yeah? And Jay? Sean, you okay with that, even if you're by Zoom?
Yes, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
So does someone want to make a motion to continue this matter at the request of the petitioner until March 23?
I'll make.
And we have a second.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman.
I think we've got Mr. Frapery moving and Mr. Igo seconding.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll let Mr. Frapery make the motion. I would ask Mr. Frapery to include in his motion a condition that the petitioner sign an extension agreement.
Yes, of course. Yeah.
Mail moved.
Yeah. And so contingent upon you signing that, sir, within, let's say, by, what are you going to do? Email it to him? And, okay, and sign it and get it back via email or sign it? But send an original signature in, please, okay? I want the original signature on the extension agreement in our file, okay?
Okay.
So, you know, you can sign it. Dolores can email it to you. You can sign it, scan it, return a copy, and then mail the original to us, okay?
Okay. I will bring all paperwork by myself next time. I want to be ready. I will be happy when you will have all paperwork, because right now, I think it wasn't submit all plans what I see up front of me.
Okay. Well, just work, go ahead and work on it. I'm sure we'll get it all together and get you going.
Well, it's not for us to get it together. It's the petitioner to get it together.
Thank you.
Come on back. Now we need to vote on the motion made by Mr. Frapery to continue the matter to March 23 at the request of the petitioner. That motion having been seconded by Mr. Igo, on the condition that an extension agreement be duly signed by our petitioner. On that motion, we have to have a roll call vote. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung is an aye. We have to do a roll call. I'm sorry. That roll call vote is favorable to the request for the continuation. We'll see you March 23rd, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Next petition, please. Come right up to the table. That is Shrim Inc., DBA Free Bird Motor Lodge, located at 553 Route 28, West Yarmouth, Mass. That property being in a B2 zoning district. Our applicant seeks to reverse the 11-3-22 decision of the building inspector and offer the grant of a special pursuant to 303.1.3, 303.13, and/or a variance pursuant to 303.5.5.2 to install a mural to include signage measured 22 feet 6 inches by 18 feet plus or minus. Go right ahead and present whoever's going to do it. Just identify who you are, okay?
Good evening, gentlemen. Hope you all have a good evening. My name is Purvish, and he's Parth, we're the owners of Free Bird Motor Lodge, previously known as Hunter Screen. I'll just try to do a quick overview of our concept here, and then we can walk through the attached material you have.
Sure.
Great. All right. So I'll just tell you.
Can you just tell us who's seated at the table with you, please?
Sure. Yeah. So that's Parth. He's also a co-owner and my brother.
We just like to all know who all of you people are.
We understand.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, right ahead, sir.
All right. So we've owned this property for about 10 years now, and currently, we're working very hard to, you know, redo the previously outdated motel, and we're bringing in new life, making it into a boutique hotel concept in effort to attract a younger generation to the Cape, you know, travel market, especially West Yarmouth. So our concept for Free Bird is obviously from the song, Leonard Skinner's Free Bird Song. And it celebrates the idea of self-discovery, exploration, and expression. We're embracing the idea of authenticity in a true and genuine form, and have integrated a multi-channel approach to reinforce these themes. Through music and art and spoken word, our aim is to enlighten and entertain our guests with performances and works from local artists in Cape Cod to showcase our public spaces and facility. Our goal is to embrace the community in which we live and help expose their talents to the audience that they may not otherwise reach. An important aspect to our goals is to include the public art as a way to bring attention to our town. It's not a self-serving mission, but more goal as a community member and business owners to identify and diversify opportunities to bring younger generations and tourism to Cape. And in order to do that, we need to start thinking in broader strokes. Gone are the days where people look at murals as criminal or gang culture. Where we as a society have turned a corner, and especially beachside communities such as Provincetown, Newport, Town of Barnstable, actually, westerly Rhode Island, they've all followed suit, inviting local artists to do murals, as long as it represents the space they're in versus random items. And it truly just embraces the culture and the community. So what we're proposing tonight to the committee is to find a way to make public art and exterior murals an option, not only for businesses, but any business that's seeking to reinvent and reinvest in their public space by creating artwork that is reflective of our town and what it celebrates and what we stand for.
Thank you very much. Nice to see people that can bring us a very concise presentation. And you accomplished that. So I know everybody on this board's going to have questions, and we'll start with Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell, do you have questions for our petitioner?
So you're going to be doing two murals?
Yeah. So what I can do is I'll walk through the deck real quick, and then you guys can ask questions. So on the first page of the plan that you see, do you guys need copies? I have extras, or we all have it?
I think we all, all of us got them.
Yep. So on there, if you see on page one, we've building, we have three total buildings on this property. The two buildings that are in question are Building A and Building B listed on there. So Building A has the end cap of that building that faces Route 28. So that's mural number one. Mural number two is on Building B, the end cap, and that actually just faces in the property itself. You cannot see it from the street. But the town, well, when we went for signage, they told us that would be signage, even though we're within, only the guest on the property can see that building. No one can see it from the street. But they included that in there, so, and it's consisting of two murals. So if you look at page two, we can go through the first one. So that is the existing picture of the signage. So the current signage is 10 feet wide and 32 inches tall. It just has the previous name, which is the Hunter Screen, and that faces Route 28. The total length of that brick wall is 22.5 feet, and it's about 18 feet tall. So what we are proposing is paint, is putting a mural on that building. We would remove that sign. Our name has now changed to Free Bird. So we would paint Free Bird. And on page three, you see the background we are proposing. When we proposed this, they had said the background is becoming a part of the sign since it doesn't meet the 24 square feet requirement. That's why we were kicked back, even though the lettering is within reason, which is 24 inches and a third of that building, which is seven feet, which is actually smaller than the current sign. The current sign's 10 feet wide and 32 inches tall.
What are the birds? How big are they? How much are they?
They're going to be scaled, but I think about foot and a half, maybe.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. No problem. So that's basically our option one. And then what we did is, we had these local artists in Cape Cod collaborate with us and come up with these concepts that represent our brand. So we came up with three different options. So we have option one, what you see right there. It's just basically an ocean, some landscape showing like a road trip theme, right? And it has Free Bird written on it, which will act as our signage. Option number two has still the Free Bird written on it and has some birds. And option three is more text and much more simpler, rather than having any particular images on it. So that concludes our first option, that we can open it up for questions, and then we can move to option two.
Good. Then we'll move to the next.
Yeah.
Interior buildings. Is that what you're talking?
Yeah.
All right. So Mr. Campbell, did you have any questions?
Is that, that light is already there that's on top?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. Mr. Mantoni?
Well, the information you got is correct. I mean, the background is part of the signage. So this greatly exceeds what the bylaw suggests, you know, for signage, so. So, you know, it's, you know, we've asked people, or businesses, to take down signs that exceeded, you know? And so, I mean, I don't know how we're going to get around this. This is large, you know?
Right. I mean, so when we were designing this, you know, we obviously, we kept the sign code in mind, and our representation of that background is more so nature, right? It would be like if anything was painted, per se. We're not putting our logos. We're not trying to sell what our product is. It's more so artwork. And artwork is the only thing on our sign code for Town of Barnstable that is the exception as a background versus, you know, actually putting up our logo or anything. If you notice, our logo's not on there.
Right.
So we complied by the sign code for the lettering itself, but the background is treated as art versus a part of that sign.
Although option three has, it's more than artwork.
Right. So we just wanted to present, you know, what the artist truly came up with. We wanted the artist to come up with the concept that resonates with our brand. And, you know, artists sometimes can be outside the code, but that's why we came up with three options. And we said, look, we love option one and two, obviously. Option three, like you said, is a bit of a stretch, but, you know, we're open to this. And if it's something that you really want, we're happy to edit. But for us, it's, our brand resonates a lot with this. And what we're seeing today, all over in the travel community, is people looking for experiences. We have to be different. How are we competing with, you know, 3,000 hotel rooms in one mile radius, right? We're on Route 28. We have to stand out somehow. We're, you know, gone are the days of the motel where people are traveling and picking a random motel off the street and staying. So they just want something new. They want something hip. What attracts them? And that's just the next generation of travelers. Yeah.
We can't do that.
Yeah. That may require a lot more employees than they're available, so that's a different story.
All right. Mr. Frapery?
I did have a chance to drive through, and you're putting a lot of money into the place. I could see all the changes you've done, so that's really, that's a nice thing to improve it all. But I agree. I just see all three of these as three signs, not a mural, et cetera. So I'm going to be challenged with, you know, what the rest of the group feels. The third option that you have for the first one, to me, that's not going to fly no matter what, because that's definitely fully signed across the whole front, and that exceeds anything that we're looking at. But other than that, I don't have any other questions on this right now, but I like what you're doing.
Okay. And we're staying just on the first three options, right, concerning the front?
Yeah.
We'll table the questions for the other. Mr. Igo?
Well, to cut to the chase here, as we deal with this frequently, and we understand every business is unique. However, we have a sign code. The people of the town went through a lot of laborious nights and days getting the sign code right. We used to have a lot of problems with signs in the town, as the board is aware. So I'm of the belief, and I think I can speak for the rest, that we don't create or recreate the sign code here. That's done at town meeting. I would not be in favor of approving anything that exceeds the maximum allowed limits that are contained in the bylaw. And so if we're looking at these, I see there's a sign right now on Route 28, okay? I don't know if that one complies or not. Does that one comply? The one that's the freestanding sign along 28?
Yeah, that one complies, and we already have a permit to replace that one. That one is 24 square feet. That one is not in question. They already approved that one.
Okay. Well, if we're looking, the only thing that I could approve is the one. Well, if we're looking, the only thing that I could approve is the one, option three, that says Free Bird Motor Lodge, and that would just say Free Bird Motor Lodge and not have all those striped painting to the right and to the left if it was stood there alone. And that's what I would agree to approve tonight. Other than that, I will let others speak, but that's my opinion, so. I don't know that we need to go sign by sign. I'd like to hear some feedback from the board, whether they agree with my position or not.
Okay. Are you done, Sean?
Yes, I am.
Could you help me, please? You've owned this for 10 years.
Yes.
I want to tell you, I think as I drive up and down this road every day that I'm in the town and working, I'm always impressed with your property. I think it's wonderfully maintained. It seems to be a quiet, nice place to visit and even in the summertime isn't a traffic problem there. And so you guys are doing a really good job and you ought to be commended for it. Our problem, quite candidly, is we have to stay consistent in our decisions. And we have just recently dealt with signs at different locations, at Sign-It, at the Music Room, and in each of those two instances had to say to the petitioners, who had very attractive signs, you know, if we're just a personal taste matter, I think we all would have voted for them. The problem is, is that we aren't in a position to do that. To do that, we would be legislating, you know? We'd be changing the sign code when that's not our purpose. Our purpose is to enforce the sign code. And in this instance, by my measurement, it would go from allowed 60 square feet to 405 square feet for your very attractive mural sign. So I think that, you know, I'd love to say, gee, I love it, it looks great, it's a pretty sign. All three of them done nice, although I think number two is a little too dark for my taste, you know, it's just, it's like you have to stare at it as a traveler going down the road to figure out what are those yellow things I'm looking at? And then you realize they're, you know, they're very attractive parrots or whatever, the pelicans, whatever they are, whatever your free bird is. And as, not pelicans, I'm sorry. You know, as signs, they might be really nice to see on 28. I start to change these things. Then again, we know what the town has said to date and the town meeting has, resoundingly, as my memory, approved this sign code as it now exists. So despite the authority for this board to grant a special permit, we can't legislate new requirements or new options to you. And regrettably, I'd have to agree with Mr. Igo. I couldn't approve it. And I don't even know that I could approve number three because I think you lose the entire concept with number three. If you take off those lines and the Free Bird above and, I mean, it's a beautiful sign. It would look great. Of course, it wouldn't look great if you wanted to do that boundary in neon, so don't come here with that.
No, we're not. We're trying to keep it more classy than loud.
And you'll keep your property very classy. It's a nice, nice property. And obviously, you're willing to put money into it. Thank you for that and making a nice property, but I can't do it, guys. So if you want us to vote on it, you've heard at least two of us now say it's not gonna happen.
Now, one question, if I may. Are, obviously, the lettering itself is not an issue because that complies with the sign code. Our issue's the background, right? It's looking at it as a sign. Is there, what if that building was painted a different way?
It was what?
What if it was painted a different way, right? It's not objects, per se, if I'm putting patterns on this building. Pattern?
Mercifully, I don't think this town, other than on the old Kings Highway District, is gonna tell you what paint to put on the side of your building.
Right.
But we are gonna tell you what sign to put there.
Right.
And that's your street-facing sign. You certainly don't want to put a mural without an identification of who you are.
Right.
And there won't be any new freestanding sign allowed either.
Of course.
You know, you're taking away your identity if you do that.
Yeah.
In my opinion, but if that's what you want to do, you want to paint a mural on the side of your building, I don't know why you can't.
Yeah.
Can't put on Hunter's Green or a Free Bird or...
I think, is your question, can you just paint the wall like one color and then put a sign in the middle?
We're thinking if murals are not an option, like geometric patterns are very catchy, can we put a geometric pattern? It has no symbols of what the business is selling, doesn't have any birds on it, per se. It would still comply, the Free Bird Motor Lodge, we would still keep within the sign code, which is the 24 inches, seven feet wide, but the background itself would be just three or four colors and some sort of pattern, because that could be part of a building design, right? It could be an architectural effect versus a sign and I can still get the, maybe a reversed look that I'm looking for to catch attention off 28.
Clearly, we'd have to see it before...
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just interject here for a minute?
Sure.
We're asked tonight to reverse the decision of the building inspector.
Yeah.
It's not our job to say whether we would approve something or not approve something. That has to go before him. He's the one who approves the signs. We don't approve the signs. So we could reverse his decision of what's in front of us tonight, but I don't think that we have the authority to go beyond that.
But by doing that, would you agree we're now changing the whole time, the whole design of the current sign code?
Pardon me?
If we were to reverse his decision, it's tantamount to allowing a new sign code.
It would be, yes.
I mean, you see, I can't do it, I know that for sure, and I can tell you right now, he's not gonna do it, but he can speak for himself. So you'd lose the vote even if three other members wanted to do it.
Right.
And, you know, you may not want to have us then vote on it because if you step it back and you're allowed to withdraw it without prejudice, you can return back after you've gone to the building commissioner if you come up with some other design that you think we might like. But caution, again, four of us here are regular members and on the sign codes that are changes that we've been asked to consider, we've been pretty darn consistent. We're not gonna deviate from the sign code. The town meeting has to do that.
All right, that's fair.
Go ahead with the next one.
Yeah, so I, what we'll do is we will reconsider and try to come up with something that's more so just a pattern versus anything that'll, you know, more so comply with this existing sign code and not asking for you guys to recreate that.
We'll present it to the building commissioner and we'll go...
If he says great, great, you don't even have to talk to us.
We'll move forward from there.
Yeah.
Sure.
So now, option two was another question we had. So if we can move to option two, that building end cap is the same exact size, but it's like an offset building that's on our lot. You cannot see it off 28. If you notice, we put the yellow markers that you can see from 28 and you're not able to see that building. So currently, that Cape Cod logo, it's already present, actually, on that building. We're just trying to paint the wall around it and nowhere on there we're stating Free Bird Motor Lodge, hotel, motel, phone number, website, anything that represents our business. More so just a fun color pattern with...
Giving an upbeat message.
Right, well, more so so people take pictures in front of it, right? That's, the concept would be get tagged and get some awareness out there and, hey, we're in Cape, and people love taking family pictures in front of it. So this was on the inside of our property and we didn't think that we even needed any permission for this.
But the building commissioner said...
But he said, hey, while you're going to the appeals board for your front mural, I'm just gonna say, go to them and talk to them about this.
So he hasn't denied you on this?
He hasn't, he hasn't said, he's neutral. He won't approve it, but he said if you're going, if you're gonna go for the appeal, you need to ask them to see if they will approve that or not for you, because...
What I, I don't know.
I mean, technically, I guess he declined it.
You know, there are procedures, and I don't know what you're appealing from. You know, if he hasn't made a decision, respectfully, he should make a decision and then we can consider the merits of your appeal.
I mean, on paper, so he's declined it, obviously, because he considered that as a sign. But we're not looking at it as a sign because we're not representing our business on it.
Okay, well, I gotta tell you again, I sat on that sign committee, sign code committee, and I'm really confused by this sign and I don't know what sign code provision that relates to it, because it's a single business at this location and it's an interior sign, not intended for any other purpose than aesthetics. I don't know, Sean, do you see where that is covered in our sign code?
I would, I think we'd need more information on that, Steve, relative to why it was denied. I don't even see any paperwork that says it was denied. So, again, we're only being asked to reverse the decision of the building inspector. I think we should either, I don't, I don't think we should, I think it should be left to him and I think that there should be more, I think we need some more language as to his denial of this thing. I mean, the petition is just telling us, well, he denied it. Well, we don't know he denied it.
We actually have an application that...
Denied.
Yeah, so when we applied for all the signs, for all...
Again, you're only allowed so many signs, is that, if he considers it a sign, again, we're, I can see the other signs, all right, there on the building. We can, we can point to the sign code there, but I would not be prepared to vote one way or the other on that without more information as to what he determined that to be or not to be.
I think he's got to deny it for us to consider it.
Yeah.
And again, it's not trying to pass the buck to somebody, it's just I don't know how you hear.
So on that application, it says denied for both of those murals.
For both signs? When you present, yeah, when we presented to him the whole plan for the property improvement.
Well, then I guess we ought to vote up or down on whether or not we're gonna overturn his decision, huh?
Okay. I'd make, I'd like to make a motion, but, well...
Well, I just want to like, you know, like the first one, like the one facing the street that's closest to the street. I mean, I would, certainly for denying that one. But the second one back, I see their point where it's really not a sign and it's a place that you can't see from the, from the street and it's a place that people that are, that are visiting that can take, you know, shots and things like that. So I don't, you know, I would be more apt to consider the one in the back than the one in the front. That's just me.
Well, I'd like to know whether there's a provision that deals with the sign within our sign code.
I don't know, we can reverse one and not the other. You know what I mean? So I just don't know how you can do that.
Well, you vote, he vote, he considered it as a denial of two different sign applications, right? I don't, I'm not even really seeing...
I don't, yeah.
I don't see the denial.
Does somebody have a denial?
I can't find it either.
It's in the, they didn't give it in the, because we did a full sign package, like the front freestanding sign, the building sign, all of it was in one. He approved the two and declined these two.
I'm just looking for it, I can't find it in my file.
It's not in there?
I don't have it, I don't have it in mine.
I guess that we need to hear more from the building inspector probably to really make a...
So may I make a suggestion, everybody, that we ask our petitioners to go back to the building commissioner and clearly have him state that the reason for, that he is denying that interior sign, because I don't know where it's provided for in our code that we can even restrict it. Maybe it is. And if he has an interpretation of that, I'd just like to know where, because I don't know of it. Having said that...
That's fair.
I agree with Mr. Campbell. I could maybe even consider that because I don't consider it a sign. I consider it a nice way of painting your building.
Right.
It's not an advertising sign. We're gonna come to you. If you want to say something, ma'am, we'll let you do it.
Well, he's, he's actually, Steve, if you look at 303.5.1, unlettered sculptures, they might, they must not exceed a maximum of 12 feet in height or eight feet in length in any horizontal direction. I don't, I don't even know what the size of this thing is. Is it taller than 12 feet in height? It looks like to me.
Would you call that a sculpture? I don't think what they're looking for, though, Sean, is a sculpture.
Well, he cited, it, in their application, it says they're looking for a variance 305 to 5.5 to 5.2. I mean, I don't know, you don't, we don't have the denial. I mean, you could, I don't know, what would you call that?
I don't know, because I don't think it's provided for within the code.
Well, then I'd say...
It's not co-branding, right? It's not a co-branding, it's just a sign, not even a sign, it's a picture.
Yeah, it's a mural. It's a mural. It's artwork.
So I just don't see where it's there, and if you tell me he did deny it specifically, then we need to know the reason for the denial before we can...
Well, he's looking at it as signage.
Because you can see it from the street, but in general, it's inside the property.
I thought you said you couldn't see it on the street.
No, he's stating that if someone can, if they put six feet into the, into the property, they can peek in and see it, or they might see it through a window, but...
If it's visual, that's what he's stating.
What's the sign telling me?
Nothing.
I just don't get it. How does it relate?
That's what our question was and he asked us to apply for it and he's like, let...
We weren't even gonna ask, right? We were gonna do it because we figured, we're not putting our name, we're not making it into a sign. But while he saw that in the package, he questioned it and we told them what it was and he's like...
Let me make a final suggestion so we can move it along.
All right.
Why don't we vote on that portion of your request that deals with the sign that faces Route 28, either voting up or down on the building commissioner's decision?
Okay.
On the second portion, because there is complete uncertainty, I think in at least my part and maybe others, that where the heck is there any provision for this? Is it even considered a sign under our code? He, I would ask you to step it back, go to the building commissioner and just have him tell us why he thinks it should be denied.
Okay.
What code, what code provision relates to the denial of this?
Do they even want us to vote on the first?
I think we would, we would step back on the first one.
You want to step back?
Yeah, and then we'll just kind of come back with both again.
Your appeal on both things without prejudice?
Yes.
Is that your request?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion or have discussion on that request?
So moved.
Who did the seconding?
That's to withdraw the entire petition without prejudice? Yes, okay.
Okay, on a roll, do we need any conversation on this before we move it along to this requested relief? So anybody out there in the audience, please understand, we're not going forward with the merits of it, so we're, at this point, we really don't have any interest in anybody, what anybody has to say, because we don't have anything to now go forward with if we grant the motion. And I'm sorry if you felt I shut you off, but we have to do this in a way.
I represent the Cape Cod Chamber and we're so happy that these young men have been tested.
Okay. Okay. And when we deal with the merits, you're all the welcome to come in. All right, so let's do it by roll call vote. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung, I will therefore, will write a decision saying that this is withdrawn without prejudice, okay? Keep up the good work, it's a nice property.
Thank you, guys.
Bad business you guys are in. All right, petition number 5001, Levabone, I hope I'm saying that, Ferrera, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, you can correct me when you get up here. So you come right up to the table, we'd love to hear what you have to say about 30th, property located at 36 Appleby Road, West Yanath, Nass. That property is located in the zoning district 825. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph two, and/or a variance pursuant to sections 203.5 of our bylaws for front setback relief to add an L-shaped deck measuring eight foot by 24 foot side. You mean to the side of the home?
Yes.
Okay.
It's to the side, right in the back.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at that in a minute, I just wanted to know, because it says front setback, but okay. And eight foot by 12 foot to the rear, is that, okay. So now, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your petition, okay? We'll pick it up by the file, but the best you can do.
So my name's Sarah, I'm here speaking for my mom, La Levon Ferrera. So my mom had a deck there and she's replacing a deck. And when she replaced it, the building commission denied because they said it was bigger than the one that was... denied, because they said it was bigger than the one that was there before, and the setbacks were not, and by the laws. So, we came in, and they said, they had to talk to Dolores and come in front of you to see if it's...
Bring your voice up just a bit.
So, we came in and talked to Dolores, and she, and then she said that she would have to come up in front of you guys and ask about the setbacks, if it was approved to have the deck finished.
Okay.
It's a corner lot, so...
Is there any decking physically on the ground now?
Yes, there is.
Okay, Mr. Frapery, any questions about petition?
This is a, this is a case in one of those corner lots, where we have, I think the main road is Appleby.
Yeah.
I think Pinewood is more the cross street. So, you know, I understand the question and the issue. It only takes it to 23.8 feet, I think, is the new, is that what the new one will be, or is that what is currently on the side?
I think that's the new one.
The new one? What is it today? Do you know what it is today?
It's built.
What's that?
It's built right now, correct?
Yes, it is. It's built right now.
It's already up?
Yes, it's already up.
Oh, okay. Do you know what the old one was, just out of curiosity?
The size, the size, how?
How close it was to the lot line?
I don't know. When I went to get a permit from Health, not the Health Department, I think it was a, yeah, they could see it on the website what the old one was, but I don't have the measurements.
All right, I don't have any other questions. It's a corner lot, and understandable, we've had issues with that in the past, and I'd be probably very understanding of the situation.
Mr. Igo?
I don't have any questions. I see what happened here. They put up a deck, they thought they were in compliance. Apparently, they weren't. A lot of people confused with the two fronts and two sides with the corner lot. I'm familiar with this road, Pinewood Road actually dead ends right down there. So, it's really not going to affect the neighbor, the closest neighbor would be across the street on Pinewood. So, I don't think there'd be any noise or any type of nuisance or anything relative to the deck being on the side of the house. And as the board's well aware, it's very difficult to deal with these corner lots because of the requirement of two front setbacks of 30 feet. So, my position on this would be, I think it's a reasonable request, and it would certainly be a financial hardship the petitioner have to remove at this point. So, I would be in favor of approving a special permit for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A special permit?
Yes.
Was it an L-shaped deck before?
Yes, in the same spot. So, the only difference is the stairs, it was on the opposite side. Instead of the front, it was in the back. But it was an L, the same way.
That's all I have. Mr. Mantoni?
No, I don't have anything.
So, you know, I agree with what everybody's had to say, but I do think that for those people listening at home that may want to come in and ask for similar relief, each of these petitions concerning these corner lots are taken on their own specific merits. In this one, I'm guided by the fact that Pinewood is a dead end, that your real front to this house you consider to be Appleby, right? And that you, is that where you get your mail? Is Appleby?
Yes, that's where we get our mail.
Clearly, that's where your front door is, and, you know, it's so very hard, the way that it's currently written on these, applying the bylaws to corner lots, because look where your septic field is. You couldn't do anything back there, you can't do anything out front, because you're already too close to the street. And your side makes that whole vast expanse useless if we didn't allow you to get the relief you're looking for here. So, I know I'm going to support it if somebody makes a motion, but before we go there, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition, seeing none? Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition, seeing none? Therefore, we now close it to the public's input to the petition, open it up to board discussion, deliberation or motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, do we approve the special permit as requested with no conditions?
Just give me a second to write, and then we'll get to your vote, okay? Does the board care to have any discussion on this motion before proceeding?
No, I think it's a very reasonable request. Even if we consider this a side setback, it would exceed that, so, you know, we've seen these before, and I think this is a very reasonable request.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, I just want to chime in with the fact that, again, we try to do this on our record, is that we recognize that this is potentially considered a front street to your property, but in these instances, historically, we've considered this as sort of a reference to a side yard as opposed to a front yard, because there's no ability to leave your house right there now, right? You'd have to cut a new door. So, we look to the criteria of a special permit for this particular type of relief in the past, and I think Mr. Igo's right, that's the relief we should be considering tonight. And with that, I don't believe that this, the grant of this will create any undue hazard nuisance nor congestion, nor will it be out of the character of the existing or future, rather contrary to the existing or future character of the neighborhood of town, okay? Just have to get those words out, please. I know it sounds boring, I apologize. So, we're going to do it by roll call. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
And I say aye. So, what will now happen is that that's a 5-0 decision. I don't think anybody in the world's going to appeal from it, but what has to happen is a decision's written, it's then filed with the town clerk's office, 20 days must elapse before that's considered a final decision from the day it's filed with the town clerk's office. But you then must bring the grant, granted special permit, to the bond stable registry of deeds and record it, and bring back to Ms. Fallon the proof of recordation, okay?
Okay.
Those are formalities, I don't believe you're going to have any problem with neighbors appealing. Good luck, glad we could resolve your problem tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Good to see you. Please come back when you have other problems we can help with. Okay, petition 502, that is Karina Brown, doing business as House of Beauty by Karina Brown, 9 North Main Street, South Yarmouth. That property is, hello, that property is located in the zoning district R-40. Sorry, we've made you wait so long, but here you are. The applicant seeks to modify decision 2492 dated December 28, 1987, to allow a change of use from retail, HN, to beautician services under J3 as referenced in our use code, and/or a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph 4 of our zoning bylaws, to allow J3 use in existing established commercial business in an R-40 zoning district. And the alternative to variance is requested from, under the use table, sections 202.5, J3, to allow beautician services in an R-40 zoning district. Would you tell us, please, your name and tell us all about your petition?
My name is Karina Brown. I'm planning on opening a small salon for lash extensions and permanent makeup, brows, lips, permanent eyeliner, and...
Okay, and can you help us, where is it? Give us a little more of, of a landmark next to where it may be located.
So, it's right at, there is an intersection, and it's right on the corner, and what I'm understanding is that it's a mixed use. There are some residents upstairs, or, I'm not very familiar with the area, because I don't live here in Yarmouth, I live in Hyannis, but I'm just trying to figure out also, like, why we are going through this process, because I'm very new to it. So, I'm just at the very beginning and first time trying to get all the permits. I just had a hearing with the Board of Health, and I got the licenses, so...
Okay, all right. Mr. Campbell, any questions about petition?
Yeah, the location in this building, where it's going to be, is it in front, like, is it across, is it on North Main Street, or is it in the back?
It's in front, right at the corner. It used to be a...
Where the, yeah.
It's right there.
I got you.
The first door, right there.
I got you, okay. Is, do you say you're going to be doing hair and everything there too?
No, no, so it has nothing to do with hair. It's going to be just lash extensions and permanent makeup.
Okay, okay. That's all I have right now.
Mr. Mantoni?
Right, so it's right on the corner of that building?
Yes.
Number nine, I saw, a Realtor, what's in there now, do you know? Is there any business in there now, or is it vacant?
Right now, it's vacant. It used to be a furniture store for many, many years, but the owner recently passed, and is a new owner who has the building and everything.
Okay, in parking? Where's parking? Is that around the back?
Yes, yes. There is a big parking lot that...
In signage, what are you going on doing about signage, or?
Sorry?
Sign, they're going to put some signs up for, how are people going to know you're there?
So, I am planning on having a sign, but I haven't gotten so far yet, based on what I'm understanding. When I'm ready for a sign, I have to come and see, I met with someone here, what's his name? Yes, for a sign.
You're not going to put a big mural on the side of that building?
No, no, no.
Anything else, Mr.?
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Frapery?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Igo?
Well, what are your hours of operation?
So, it's going to be 10 to 6 p.m. It might be only Monday through Friday. I'm not sure if Saturday is going to be included yet. It's going to be just me at the beginning. It's by appointment only most of the times, most of the appointments. An appointment can take from one to three hours, it depends.
I see, okay. Now, are you going to be on the back corner of the building where you make the turn to go behind the riverway? Is that the space that you're going to occupy?
So, it's right at the corner?
Yep.
In front.
No, I see, I see, it doesn't matter either one. There's an interior decorator on the left side, I don't know if there's still there.
Across the street, maybe.
Yeah, and quite frankly, it's interesting that this is even in a residential zone, given where it is. It's, it's almost, you know, I know there's residences upstairs. I don't think I have any other questions. You explained it to me, saying you're not going to be putting a bunch of chairs in there, and so is it only going to be you right now for as an employee, or are you going to have other people?
For now, it's going to be just me. I'm planning on starting like this, and maybe in the future, but for now, I'm just like taking it easy, step by step. I've been working for the same salon for many years, so right now, I just have like, trying to build a strong foundation of my vision for my own space.
Okay, okay. And you said 10 to 6, how many days a week you're going to be open?
It might be Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday.
Okay, all right, okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so why don't you weigh in on a question I have? Use table for J3 doesn't say no, subject to grant of special permit, it says no.
Yeah, this is a variance. You can't, you can't modify a special permit for an unpermitted use. We need to, and I'm not even sure what's there now. Which one are they trying to modify? Is this that old one?
1987's decision.
Nine? Eighty-seven, from real estate sales to a mental health outpatient clinic? Is that what was there? Is that what they took there? That's interesting. Well, petition for existing non-conforming structure, board finds, or take, grant, such release, set forth, well, the, it was, what they granted was not a special permit, it was a variance, because that's section 103.2.2. I believe that's the variance criteria in our bylaw, isn't it?
Well, they, it is, but they, they say it's a grant of special permit. Oh, Tom George was there too, wow. Wait, that's a whole decision.
That, well, that's, let me just see something here, yeah, it is, no, that's under the special permit criteria. Well, I don't know what the use table said back then relative to, I know a real estate office, I'm sure, was allowed by special permit back then.
Yeah.
Whether a mental health outpatient clinic was allowed there or not, I don't know by special permit, but this is not allowed use. So, it would be my opinion that it would have to be a variance. I think she could probably meet the variance criteria. I could make a, an argument in favor of that, but I do think that that's the relief that should be granted here tonight, is a variance.
I don't know how else we can proceed, because when it says no, it says no, and when we can do it by special permit, we're just talking internally here, don't panic, okay? You know, when it says no, but with notations, then you can do it by special permit. So, I agree, it's got to be by variance. You know, this is a return to something that gives us some more neighborhood feel over there, in my opinion, and is going back to what that part of town historically was, kind of a nice little village feel to it.
Yep, four corners, yep.
You know, kind of small, little businesses that appeal to the public, and what's that living up above? Is it, are those apartments above?
Yes, for now.
To me, it's what it should be. So, I know I can speak favorably of it, but I just want to make sure we're granting the right relief, and I agree with Mr. Igo that it's a variance. If he can make the pitch for how we qualify for a variance, then I could vote favorably. I'm just looking at Mr. Igo on the screen over here, you see, am I up there? He's showing his very handsome face, all the way from some other state, lucky fellow, where it's warm. So, you know, I know I can speak favorably from it, but first, what we have to do is ask if anybody in the public would like to speak in favor or against this petition, and since there's no one in the room, we know that there's no cattle herd running to the microphone. We therefore shut it off to public and put on the petition, open it up to board discussion, deliberations. What are the criteria, how is she meeting the criteria for a variance?
Well, I think literal enforcement of this bylaw would involve a substantial hardship to her, because she would not be able to operate her business. While the hardship is not owing to circumstances related to soil condition, shape, or topography, it is not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. It is a business there, which is in a residential zoning district. However, it's really more of a commercial district by way of operation that surrounds the entire property. We do have in our bylaw a top-of-the-shop provision, perhaps the planning board may want to look at this particular corner and consider re-zoning it in the future. But I think desirable relief can be granted without the substantial detriment to the public good, nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Historically, there have been businesses there. The business that she's proposing here, although it is, falls under beauty, it's really a specialty, it's more of a makeup situation. She's not running a hair salon where you're going to have a lot of machinery and traffic and people. It's special to her, it's kind of a niche business, it's appointments that are going to come in, personal appointments. Even if she were to expand, it would still be personal, because everybody that comes into her business is going to probably be spending well over an hour for appointment for the things that she does for people. So, I do think she meets the criteria for a variance. I would suggest... I would suggest that the board support her request.
So, just as a brief aside, Mr. Igo, 20 years ago, a man you'll remember, Judge Richard Staff, suggested at a cocktail hour that I do something for the town, and encouraged me to get on the planning board. And in the planning board, one of the first things we got involved with, and Doug will certainly remember this, was the effort, at great expense after receiving a grant, to come up with village centers up and down Route 28. We came up with six of them, that Doug probably remembered, after lengthy, lengthy, lengthy public meetings, private, you know, committee meetings, and with the concept of top-of-the-shop being the goal. Let's make it a walking Route 28, where people can enjoy walking down a boulevard, right? Boy, we've come far on that, haven't we, 20 years later? Talking about needing to grant this poor woman a variance to do exactly what we talked about wanting to do 20 years ago?
Well, I, I think you make a good point, Mr. Chairman. I think it's really the purpose and intent of the bylaw and of the people at, of the town, that that's what they want here. They want to see a business in this location. They want to see the top-of-the-shop residential above it. And this really is emblematic of what they tried to do back then. This has really been our village center historically, and it, it was a place, a small corner, four corners, with commerce there. And I think it's important for us to try to maintain that historical character of the four corners of South Yarmouth.
Yeah, I agree. Well, anyway, any other discussion anybody wants to have before moving along to a, a motion and a second, and then a vote? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance as requested. The only conditions that I would put on this petition is that she's not to operate her business after 6 o'clock at night due to the residences upstairs. If she wants to come back and needs to modify that in the future, she'll, if she wants to increase her hours, she needs to come back and see us. That would be the only condition that I would have.
Before moving it along to asking for a second, would you consider adding to your motion that the, there be no operation of the business on Sundays?
Sure.
And that it be limited solely to that of hair, hair extensions and makeup and others like, because I don't want to see this develop into a hair salon without Board of Health involvement in it, you know, with dyes and chemicals and all of that. I think it should be limited exactly to what she's represented it to be.
Yeah, I, I think in the decision, we'll just state what she represented to us, and she can maybe state that again. It's the hair extensions, makeup, permanent eyeliner.
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's not hair extensions, it's eyelash extensions.
Eyelash extensions.
So it has to do with skincare.
Yeah.
Nothing with hair, because for what I do, I have a tattooing license, and it cannot be in the same place with something like hair or something like that.
I just don't want you doing hair dyeing and that sort of...
Nothing like that. That's not what I do.
Eyelash extension.
Yes.
Permanent makeup or makeup in general?
No, it's lash extensions and it's permanent makeup for, like, brows and, it's similar to a tattoo, because basically I have a tattooing license. But I just wanted to double check, what happens if by, sometimes I stay later, like, I fit in a client or my appointment runs later, or something like that? I mean, I hope it's a quiet area, because the place has to be quiet and everything, but what happens if?
Why don't, why don't we extend her hours, Mr. Chairman, until 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock? There's businesses right there. You know, there's a business across the street. If it's only her in there alone, if she has somebody that runs over, why don't we say 8 p.m.?
Is that workable for you? Because that's, I think ridiculously late for you to be doing this as a woman alone in that shop.
I do it all the time.
Only because it's a dark corner down there as well, and I, you know, I don't know that I'd even want to walking around down there in December by myself when I go out to my car. So if 8 o'clock is okay, I don't, I don't care one way or the other, if you think that's it. But if they start stomping on the floor from above, would you please be, you know, responsible and keep the radio off or something if they get upset about the noise?
I mean, there shouldn't be any noise, because it has to be a quiet place, hopefully, because otherwise...
So we have three conditions that we've discussed, no operation after 8 p.m., no Sunday operation, and it be limited to the exact services that a petitioner has represented it, represented it to be, and not include any hair dyeing or setting, okay? No chemicals is what I'm looking for there.
There are no chemicals, right? What you do, the tattooing, the, is there ink? I mean...
Yes, there is ink.
No, I don't care about that. I'm care, I care about what's going to go down into the water.
Yes, no, I wouldn't, no. It's basically lash extensions and skincare and brows, basically.
Okay. So on that, we need a second, if somebody's willing to second it? I'm sorry?
I'll second that.
And does the board care to have any discussion on it? The motion made with the conditions stated?
I just think it's a very reasonable thing to do, and I, I think it is a good, a good use of space down that corner, and it's a chain commercial, and I think it just continues, continues with what we've been doing.
Yeah. I have an office in Hyannis and on a Bonstable Road. There's probably two or three of these shops lined right up, very close to each other.
I work there.
Okay, well, listen. Great to see you, good to talk with you. And let's have that vote by roll call. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that carries. I'll draft a decision, it will be filed with the town clerk's office. Once it's filed, 20 days must elapse before it's considered finally granted. At that point, you will then need to take that document issued by the town clerk's office, bring it to the Bonstable Registry of Deeds down on Route 6A in Bonstable, file it, record it down there, and then return proof that it's been recorded to our board secretary, administrator and secretary, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask her to withdraw her request for a special permit?
Oh, that's right, to, yeah, there was, there was a second request that you made, and that is that in the alternative to a grant of variance, that there be a grant of a special permit. So we have to act on that in some fashion. Usually, what we do is the petitioner says to us, you know, I'd like to have that withdrawn without prejudice, okay? So, and we allow that routinely in, in these instances. So is that your request, that you'd be allowed to withdraw it without prejudice? Of course. Okay. And on that, we're just going to, I'm going to violate the governor's...
Still not...
And say, are we all in favor? All in favor?
Yes.
Say aye, aye, that carries unanimously. Go home and thank you very much. Good luck with your business, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
I have to turn to Mr. Frapery. I had nothing to do with that meeting, so. Mr. Frapery, you...
Yeah, we bring, bring the minutes up for, for approval. Got a motion from Mr. Igo, is there a second?
A second.
Do we have to do a roll call?
No, I mean, I...
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let our new governor come down and tell us we're doing something wrong. I'm fine with it. Was there a last piece of business you wanted to do?
No, Mr. Chairman, we're all set.
Okay. Then somebody moves to adjourn, and we have so heard, discussed, and seconded, and voted affirmatively to go home. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Igo, we look forward to seeing you in person.
I will see you, I'll see you next, one more meeting by Zoom, and then I'll, then I'll be back.
Enjoy the sunshine.
Yeah, thank you. Good night, all.